Hard Jones. That's you.
Yeah. Well, there it is. All right.
It's being recorded. I'm not going to leave it.
I'm going to turn this on.
You're to turn up the volume.
It looks like the owls are working.
Counselor Preston. She's already a panelist. She's really good. And Counsel Lane is also going to be joining us. Counselor Preston, can you hear us?
I can't.
Okay. She sounds loud enough. Yeah, this is. She's going to be giving the council rebuttal to the mayor's update. Thank you, counselors. Before we begin tonight, I want to remember somebody who recently passed away, well-known in our communities across this region, Reverend Helen Margita. Helen was an affiliate minister at the Unitarian Universalist Church here locally. In the words of Reverend Rebecca, she was a woman of grace and dignity, whose work with special needs children and their families along with her interfaith ministry has touched countless people. She was known as a devoted advocate for folks facing the stigma of mental health issues and other disabilities, worked in a variety of ways to help make this a better world. So please join me in remembering her and sending our love and affection to her family at the Unitarian Universalist Church as well as her two sons. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk could be so kind as to call the roll.
I would be happy to, Mr. President. Just a roll call for the city council meeting, 7:00 PM on March 11, 2024. Counselor McCauley.
Here.
Counselor Preston.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Shan.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Yeah.
Counselor Zee.
Here.
Counselor Dunne.
Here.
Counselor Granis.
Here.
Counselor Harmon.
Here.
Counselor Khan is absent. Counselor Lane.
Here.
Thank you. And Counsel President Cameron.
Here.
We have 10 present or remote and one absent.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, before we do the late files, I just want to make sure. Does everything seem to be up, all set here? I've got the video on. The owl is connected. That is probably. It is meeting. Owl connected.
Stop video when you start.
Hmm? Okay.
Quick point of order, Clerk Jones. I think you said 10, but you meant nine, and then two remote and one absent?
That's, yes, so we have one absent.
Two.
Two remote. Yes, you're correct.
Sorry to be a stickler.
It's okay.
Getting a little bit of a not responding. Here. Now, the microphone is not working.
Why can't the video start?
Please select another video camera and settings. They are all, they are turned on. Are they plugged in?
Yeah.
They must be.
Wrong, for sure.
Counselor Preston, can you hear us by any chance?
She could be formed, but I don't know.
I think you might need to restart the Zoom.
Why would start video not work?
Because Zoom is not responding. It's showing as though Counselor Preston is talking. Then, no.
It's because of the audios.
You think if we reboot it, would it work?
If we stop the meeting and restart the meeting? Would that be about the only thing I can think of?
Is the audio? After we click the audio.
Your microphone is not working. Please check your connection or use a different mic.
Well, on the audio, what mic should it be set on? Does anyone have a preference? The one what?
The one you guys have selected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I say one in doubt, reboot. For those that can hear me, we're going to turn this off and restart it. We'll give it the obligatory 15 seconds and we'll give that another shot. Delightful picture. Clerk Jones, failing to detect your speaker.
Just reboot the whole computer, the whole thing, start from scratch.
You're going to do that, right? We'll have to log in again.
Yeah, let me just. Let's do that.
Technology getting in the way of the message.
Yeah. Yep. Try restart.
Control, Alt, start over. Start the whole meeting over.
Oh, how's everyone been?
Make sure you try the Veal.
Do you have any jokes from India?
No. There's a good one about this city clerk.
Or even in India, it's a great talk.
It is.
All right, Zoom. That looks like me.
But it looks like it's going.
But it has not identified the owl yet, so.
Hi, can you see you? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we're trying to get the owls connected.
I did not have a video there.
Okay. Yeah, so it's not reading, the owl is not coming up here. So I'm wondering about the connections to the owl. Is that going into the owls?
Yeah.
What's disconnected? I think these appeared.
Okay, now we're getting some progress here. Yeah, the owls here, owls connected on video. Not start video failed to start the video camera. Is it definitely turned on?
Well, it was paired.
Yeah.
Video still. Now it's HP camera. Audio is, does not show the owl.
Yeah, I've lost the pairing.
Yeah, I had to.
Yeah.
Okay, camera.
Works good now.
Camera is the owl.
All right.
Bizarre.
Audio is the owl. I don't actually hit end meeting. Okay, I think we're, we're in business. So we've done the first part of the meeting, which was recorded and online. We've done our call to order, so Counselor Khan is absent. Counselors Preston and Lane are remote. And that, I believe, would get us to the late file items.
Which are this evening, the following. Appointment 479 Karen Kulinane, 88 Federal Street. To the Library Board of Directors until 2031. That's to go to Community Services. There are a couple of reappointments. Joe Copper, 8 Fruit Street, to the Fruit Street Local Historic District until 2027. That's to go to Planning and Development. David J. Vance, 10 Pleasantview, Merrimack. Special Police Officer with the Newburyport Police Department to go to Public Works and Safety. We have an order, 546 Harbor Master Department Seasoned Dock Permit Fee to go to Budget and Finance. Communication 544 is an email from Laurie O'Donnell regarding flooding at 29 Marquand Lane to go to Public Works and Safety. And lastly, Communication 545, a memo regarding the zoning advisory group and the MBTA communities from Director Port to go to Planning and Development and Committee the Whole.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files and their respective committee, except for 545. Can we just not do the committee assignment at this time?
We can take off P and D and Committee the Whole.
Still admit the late file.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded on the consent agenda. So everything would go to respective committees with the exception of Communication 545, which would go presumably in the regular agenda. Okay.
Thank you.
Need a roll call on that?
We do. For the amended consent to, late files, if you will. Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Perfect. That leads us to public comment, I believe, Mr. President.
Public comment. We will be taking remote public comment as well if anybody wishes to speak, if they could put their hands up.
If no one's on the pier.
And we have nobody in person to speak. So once, going once, twice on online, seeing no hands. We will move into the mayor's comment.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for mentioning Reverend Helen. We had a nice, really nice ceremony on Thursday. Counsel Wright, thank you for being there. On our front steps, we had probably over 50 people there. You know, kind of a vigil, community healing event. I said some words along with Reverend Rebecca. You know, it goes without saying, you know, we haven't met since State of the City, but obviously a very tough week for the community. Tough week here at City Hall, tough week at the UU. So I think we're all just, we're all doing better, I would say. But, you know, it was great having that moment on Thursday to be together and to recognize Reverend Helen. I got to meet both her sons. You know, both grew up here in Newburyport. And they've set the services for April 13th. So again, with it being so many weeks until the services, it was nice to come together on Thursday. State of the City, just an annual Public and Community Service Awards. Just to recap, thank you all for being there, for those that were able to attend. You know, we look back at five days throughout last year and how they kind of connected to some of the things that were ongoing. Whittier, ongoing projects, new department heads, housing, infrastructure, city initiatives that we hope to accomplish this year. You know, again, it was a very tough night, but we were, you know, glad to be together and talk about, you know, all the great things that we want to get done this year. The annual Community Service Awards, if you haven't checked that out yet, we had a really great group that was honored. The individual service awards were Paula Esti, Jim McCarthy, and Nicole DeRosa. Public Service Award honorees were Steve Burgholm, Tara McGregor, and Danny Sinclair. Youth Services honorees were Jackson and Isla, Isla deVivo, who did the socks box last year, if you remember seeing that around town. And then the screening room was recognized as well, F for the Business Service Award. So really just a fantastic group, really showing us what service is all about here in Newburyport. Next couple updates are things that happened this past week. We did reconvene the Mental Health Task Force. We did convene the Mental Health Task Force last week. So the Mental Health Task Force, again, this has taken me a little bit longer than I thought to get together, but we got together a smaller stakeholder group. And then we got the Institute for Community Health to do a mental health needs assessment. So we actually just received that report, so we met last week to go over that. And now we'll be reaching out to a larger group for the Mental Health Task Force. And from there, we will work on setting up goals and action items as we dig deeper into that needs assessment. But a really great meeting last week. We actually did two sessions with two different groups, but it went really well. The other one was the Whittier Regional Task Force, and thank you, Counsel Harmon, for being there as well. We had our first meeting last week here at City Hall. All communities were represented except for Merrimack. Both of their representatives weren't available that day, but they will be at next meeting. We spent most of our time kind of just talking about the 1967 regional agreement and things that we wanted to address in the, in the next iteration of that. So we did set up a, a next meeting, and we're going to meet April 3rd in Amesbury next. So, but a really positive first meeting, I would say. Senior Community Center, celebrating St. Patrick's Day this week. If you're looking for a fun time, Wednesday, the 13th, from noon to 2:00. Live Irish music and step dancers. They'll also have some corned beef and cabbage. I see Clerk Jones nodding his head, so maybe we'll stop by Clerk Jones. What else? The mayor, Gaden Morrell Charitable Foundation. So they donated this past year all their funds to go towards the Bartlett-Mao project. So I know there's been some talks since that project is technically on hold as we try to identify some other funding. But we reached out to them, and they'd still like that money to go to that project. You know, again, that's a project that's very important to them. And again, it's their money. So that's, that's all I'll say to that. But, you know, next year, when we go through the process, we'll have another, probably another number of events, projects that will go through the Parks Commission that they'll recommend, and then they'll get to pick, you know, what they would like to do next year. Recreation and Youth Services, their summer and spring activity guide is out, and so get ready for March 13th at 6:00 PM. It's the most stressful night of the year for, for parents here in Newburyport. Obviously scholarships and payment plans are available if needed. But plan ahead, be ready for 6:00 PM on Wednesday. Rec Center on 59 Low Street, we're still moving along. Next community service meeting is coming up on March 18th. I think that next meeting will talk more about the finances. And I know Ethan Manning will be a big part of that discussion. And I believe the Assistant City Engineer Diane Gagnon will also be in attendance to talk about the site, any kind of engineering, things like that. You mentioned, you heard about Marquand Lane. We had a communication that was a late file. We got about five residents on Marquand Lane reach out to us this weekend with the, with some serious flooding. And so we are going to meet with the DPS tomorrow. I know they were out there today. We're meeting here tomorrow to talk about some options. And if we need to come to City Council, we'll come you, come to you for that. But there are, you know, some pretty significant flooding issues on that street. So we like to try to help them out as best we can. And just two last things. I'm sorry, I'm actually going, this is much longer than I thought it was going to go on. Lower Atkinson Safety Project, we do have a transfer in tonight. And so we're hoping that transfer obviously goes to Budget and Finance for ARPA funds for Lower Atkinson Safety Project. We would love to do that this year, so we are reconvening the ARPA committee. So we'll have Counsel McCauley, Counsel Harmon, and Counsel Preston on that. Kind of staying consistent where the setup was last, last session when it was Public Safety, someone from Budget and Finance and Community Services. And so we will try to set up a meeting here in the next week or so so we can talk about some of the things that we'd like to do. The ARPA funds, what, where we've targeted for some projects. We've also targeted some CPA funds for Lower Atkinson, which we were told wasn't available now, and now they're saying that we could use it for that. So, you know, it's going to be a much smaller ask of the ARPA funds. And again, this is something we can finish this year, which would be great. And lastly, we got some good news this morning. I had a call from Senator Warren this morning during one of my meetings. And, you know, we got, actually congressionally directed spending in the form of an earmark from Senator Warren. And the city was awarded $883,000 today to go towards protecting our water supply. So we had sent, submitted this last year, and it hadn't really gone anywhere. And this is directly linked to the Indian Hill project. So it'll help us fund that next phase of design for that. So that was some really great news. And that's it. Sorry I took so long.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor, comments?
All right. Have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that's going to lead us to a presentation on the Specialized Energy Code Ordinance. So this is going to be Molly Ettenborough as well as Mike Strauss from the Energy Advisory Committee. This will be a five to 10-minute presentation. If somebody's dying with a question or comment, I'd certainly indulge that. However, I think most of this would be in committee. And just the thought was to at least get off to a start. And now, of course, somebody needs to tell me where to find the.
It's on the desktop.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want me to come over?
Nope.
I'll talk while you do that. So, hi, everyone. Molly Ettenborough, Recycling, Energy and Sustainability. Nice to see you all. Thank you for hearing about this wonderful new code that the state is looking at. We're pleased to present this ordinance. It's a upgrade from the Stretch Energy Code, which is in Chapter 5 of Buildings and Regulations, to a Specialized Energy Code. Dr. Mike Strauss is the Chair of our Energy Advisory Committee, and he will present this. And of course, we will be available for questions tonight, anytime, and of course, in committee. If you have any additional thoughts, please let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, thanks you for letting me have some time here. The Energy Advisory Committee is recommending that the city approve the Opt-In Stretch Energy Code. First, a little background on what energy codes, what, excuse me, building codes are. They come down from the state. Cities and towns don't get to write their own. There is the Base Energy Code, which everybody has to have. We, as a city, have adopted the Stretch Energy Code, which is a little more energy efficient. And then there's a Specialized, which we are advocating for tonight. All of these codes change over time. They are upgraded due to best practices, due to safety, health, and energy. So what we're recommending for, that the city adopt, will be something that comes down the pike anyway, and we will be doing in the future. Next slide, please. So why the Specialized Opt-In Code? Well, the city has made various net zero energy commitments. It's in our master plan. It's in our energy roadmap. It's in the C4D agreement. Buildings are roughly a third of our carbon footprint. And so that's an important place to work on. Our net zero plan, I can state in one sentence. It's go electric and green up the, the electric supply. It's our responsibility as individuals and as a community to go electric. It's the state and federal responsibility to green up the grid. Right now, the, the electric grid is about 52% non-carbon emitting sources, and that will increase over time. So if you convert to electricity, you will automatically be getting greener and greener over time. The Specialized Energy Code works on new buildings only. So other, it doesn't put any requirements on the buildings that are already here. It's just for new construction, new additions. So far, 31 communities have adopted it. Next slide, please. So it applies to new construction only, additions over 1,000 square feet. It does not trigger, if you put an addition, so you knock out a wall, you want to put in a new kitchen, that does not trigger that the whole house has to be upgraded, just the addition. It does not apply to renovations. So if you are keeping the same footprint, it does not apply to you. So it's really only this very small wedge of new construction. And it is, and it's basically the same as the current code that we have, except for large, single-family homes, and large is defined as over 4,000 square feet, which seems pretty big to me. And so only really for large, single-family homes that are using fossil fuels and large multifamily units. And what it really is asking those, those people to do if they're building new is make it electric-ready. So it's giving you consumer choice. You still get to choose. But if you choose fossil fuels, you, you need to have the wiring in place and the panel capacity. And so it encourages all-electric buildings. And so these new buildings will meet the Massachusetts State Climate Goals. Next slide, please. So this is basically just a quick picture of what goes into a, an efficient building. It's really the envelope. Better insulation, windows and doors, energy management, electric heat pumps, electric appliances. So that means electric stove, electric hot water, electric dryer. Next slide, please. So there are two pathways. One is all-electric, one is mixed fuel. And there are four categories of buildings: small residential, large residential, multifamily, and commercial. If, if the new construction is all-electric, basically you don't have to do anything. You will be satisfying the code by doing what's already our, our building code. If you decide to use some fossil fuels for something, that's where things kick in. And that means pre-wiring so that it can be converted later. It means panel capacity. It means solar, unless it's inappropriate for solar. And it means higher energy efficiency for certain of these classes. So higher energy efficiency means better insulation, better windows and doors. Next slide, please. So electric buildings are good for your pocketbook. It's good for your comfort and health and the climate. I want to talk a little bit about costs. This is very important. This is probably where you're going to get the most comments from your constituents. They're probably going to be saying, you know, it costs way too much to do this. Well, the, the DOE R in the state has, has done a number of simulations on this, and they come out that it's less expensive. And I want to go over the methodology, what goes over there. There's, we have a link that you can see all their studies. They have done dozens of them. So in some sense, yes, heat pumps are more expensive. But it's not more expensive when the state gives you back $10,000 per heat pump and the federal government gives you a 30% tax credit, and that they're additive, and the 30% is on the price before the rebate. So that's a big incentive to use heat pumps. So it's not really that more, not expensive. The methodology, the DOE R, used, which I think is really important here, because this is what we in the Energy Advisory Committee have been trying to get you in the city council, this information, when you look at projects. The top line of, of a project is not all that important. It's the top line, that's the cost, but then you got to say, what are the incentives? So that lowers it. And then you got to say, well, we don't really pay that. What happens is we pass a bond, and we pay it over time. Or a person gets a mortgage. So the real cost is the annual cost of paying back that mortgage, plus the annual cost of operating that building, which is the energy that goes into it. So you look at those two costs, and that's really what you're paying. And that's what we as taxpayers pay when we do a new building. So what you really want to be asking us and asking the people who do new projects is, what is the, the cost of owning, of ownership? What is the after-incentives? What is the annual costs? Both energy and paying back the bond. That's my sermon. On comfort, electric homes are more comfortable. One, because they're quieter. Second, because they keep more uniform temperatures. We've all been taught the way to save energy is, oh, when you get up in the morning, that's when the heat should go on, then you go out to work, and the heat should lower for the day. Then you come back, and the heat should go on, and then you go to bed, and the heat should go down. All this switching back and forth. That's because furnaces are on-off devices. They're either running full blast or they're off. Heat pumps work differently. They have a continuum of operation. And so what you want to do is get them running at the lowest level to just replace the energy that's leaving your house through the walls. So the best way to operate a heat pump is to say, I like it at 68, set it at 68, and that's it, 24/7/68. And so it's a more comfortable house, and it's a less expensive house. In addition, electric homes produce less pollution. In addition, electric homes produce less pollution, there are plenty of studies that show that the community health benefits increase, the amount of healthcare costs go down as you move away from fossil fuels, and it mitigates climate change. Next slide, please. So, we've done some projects with the city over the years, and the biggest question that always comes up is, won't this make the city an undesirable place to live? And the answer is, not really, no. In fact, we've seen it with the bottle bill, I lived in Massachusetts when that passed in the 80s. We've seen it with the thin film, thin film plastic band bag ban, we've seen it with the Stretch Energy Code. People are so worried about that, but what we can say is, Newburyport property values keep going up, in fact, Newburyport is probably the most desirable community in our neighborhood, despite the fact that we have the Stretch Energy Code, a thin film plastic bag ban, we have a bottle bill, all those things. They would make this a good city. So, what we see is our property values go up, this will make building homes in Newburyport less expensive, and it will make it more comfortable, new homes. And finally, for affordable housing, our low-income residents, affordable housing doesn't mean luxury-housy, but it should mean quality housing. And our low-income residents deserve to have quality housing that's comfortable and affordable. They shouldn't have to choose between paying the rent and paying for heat, they should be able to be warm and comfortable. Next slide, please. Finally, this is better for the city. Since we adopted the Stretch Code in 2010, that enabled us to join the Green Communities status. That's enabled us to get a number of grants, over a million dollars to the city, and that brings continued savings. Just one project, the streetlight change to LEDs, which we used green community funds for, that saves us $150,000 a year on electric bills. Probably more now that electricity has gone up. The problem is, now almost all cities and towns in Massachusetts are green communities. So, yes, there's still a pot of money there, but there's more competition for it, and less that gets spread around. There's a new program coming down the pike called Climate Leaders, and it will require the Specialized Opt-In Code. That will bring new funding opportunities, and as usual, the early adopters will have sooner access to those funds, and will have a larger impact from that. What's the impact on our building and planning department? Nothing much, they're used to, they get new building codes every three years, so it's something they have to work with anyway. Finally, we're gonna end up with this anyway, over years, because the building codes keep getting upgraded. So, we might as well take it, the real question for you is not to do it or not, but when will we do it? If we wait, we can do that, if we choose now, we have a better chance of getting these advantages for the city sooner, and more of them. Thank you, next, final slide. Feel free to contact me, I know there's gonna be a lot of discussion, it'll go to subcommittee and all that sort of stuff, so we look forward to working with you on this topic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Quick question? Okay, great, we'll hash it out in committee with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Molly. Very informative. I now see Counselor Khan joining us. Counselor Khan, let us know if you can hear me, and I suppose we should make you say "present," get you officially on the docket. A lot of talk. Counselor Khan, is that truly you?
Yes, sorry, it is me.
Great, all right, thank you. Good to see you. Okay, that would lead us to the consent agenda. Which tonight consists of the following. Approval of the minutes for February 26. We have four communications, Communication 542 is the Municipal Buildings Report, to go to General Government. Application 186 is Love Local Newburyport Runway for Recovery, that'd be from 3:00 to 9:00 PM on 5/9/2024. License and permits. Application 187 is the Basin Apparel Company Request for a Tent on Water Street, license and permits. Application 188, Newburyport Arts and Culture Shanties Pop-Up Park Request, that's to go to license and permits. There are two transfers, Transfer 184, City Clerk, General Free Cash, $15,000, to Elections, to go to Budget and Finance. Transfer 185, Mayor's Opera Funds, $282,000, and Joppa Park Walkway, $30,000, to go to Budget and Finance and Committee of the Whole. Items removed from their respective committees, Budget and Finance. Transfers 181, 182, 183, Orders 540, 541. Community Services, Applications 463, 464, 465, 467, 468, 469, 470, 471, and 473. Confirmatory Appointment 472, and Order 515. Planning and Development, Application 466. Confirmatory Appointments, Application 474, I'm sorry, Appointment, Appointment 475, and Appointment 476. Reappointments, Appointment 477 and 478, and that is the Consent Agenda this evening.
Can we please take out the shanties? I just lost the number. Application 188, please. Otherwise, motion to approve.
So remove Application 188.
188, we'll go to the Record Agenda.
Secrated by Counselor Harmon.
And that was Counsel Z, Secrated by, thank you.
And, let's maybe collectively add, receiving file the Mayor's Update.
Sounds good. Okay, just to note, Counselor Khan had been on, just to answer any questions about the Stretch Code presentation, but she has since dropped off, she does not have stable internet, so she said...
Oh, okay.
She said bye, everybody, so we will make her absent again.
In and out.
Test appearance.
Okay. So, you ready for roll call, Mr. President?
Roll call.
It's gonna be a roll call on the Consent Agenda with, and receiving and filing the Mayor's Update, with, for the record, Application 188 coming out, going into the Record Agenda. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Dunio?
Yes.
Counsel Granis? Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan is off, for the record, Counsel Elaine?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you. I think that leads us to first reading appointments. So we have confirmatory appointments, 468, 469, 470, 471, that's Nicole Whalen, Shanna Satori, Catherine Moran, and Peta Kazasti.
Motion to approve collectively on first reading.
Second.
Waive the rules?
Why do I need to waive the rules?
Well, they are confirmatory, they're actually the same thing that is in Community Services right now, it's just that the date was moved from 2025 to 2027.
So you wanna waive the second reading?
I would think so.
So moved.
Second.
So the motion is to waive the rules, approve in one reading. Appointments 468, 69, 70, and 71. Correct.
Yes.
First and second.
Any further discussion? Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I just, it's a question, it's more a point of order than anything else. I know the date changes are here, we're doing that to confirm that, but they are listed on the, the committee items coming out tonight as well. So, would this vote be taken to just change the dates, and we're still going to go through the confirmation of them later on during the committee items, or does this supersede that motion?
Mr. Clerk?
It would be my suggestion that when we get to the same items in the committee item, we would just receive and file them, because they're old and outdated, these supersede them.
So our vote right now is to confirm them?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, somebody... Counsel Preston, go ahead. Did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, sorry, I have my handwritten, by the way, because, yes, we are just changing the data, and they came in with the wrong data, so we're just gonna be updating the data.
Okay, thank you, Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, so, thank you, Chair, then, then a request I'd have of the, of the committee chair then is to give an overview of the conversations you had with these folks, so that we can cut down on the committee report a little later on. Thank you.
So Counsel Preston, would you be able to speak to those appointments, so Nicole Whalen, Shanna Satori, Catherine Moran, Peter Kazasti?
I sure can, and, just give me one second, pull up my, come in one minute. Okay, fantastic, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, so, yes, so, starting with, sorry, firstly is Appointment 469, Shanna Satori. Shanna is new to Newburyport in September, she is the Site Manager for the local historic New England properties, including the Better Prepared Little Farm. She's a Master of Public History, and has been active in arts for about 13 years prior, and then recently received a Master's Thesis of, sorry, she recently received her Master's in Public History and the Master's Thesis for the Public Art, Art Placement in Impact of the Community. She is really looking forward to her time on the Public Art Committee, has an opportunity to marry her history and art background. Her appointment was approved in Committee 2 to 0 as one after. Moving on to Appointment 471, which is Catherine Moran, she has also been to Newburyport in September, she has been to reading and design. Has done, has done art for her whole life, she currently works as an architectural designer, she has a very strong interest in the public arts project pool. Her appointment was approved 3 to 0, as our third counselor did, who joined us a bit late in that meeting. Appointment 471 is Peter Karzak, he's kind of lived in Newburyport for about a year, he has been involved in art for a very long time, including his professional work, both in art, all his professional work being both in arts and design. He has worked particularly in, has particular work in public finance in the past. He is currently on the steering committee of Newburyport Document and Film Festival, and is particularly interested in transparency of public art. His appointment also came through as 3 to 0. And then, lastly is Appointment 468, which is Nicole Whalen, she has been the first commissioner for the past two years. They have seen on the Parks Commission, so it's interesting, Memorial has told you, the Parks Commission would have been clear for the Parks Commission to be able to say, yes, until they have an understanding of whether memorial is art or not, and, you know, how to draw that line between public art and memorial. She does have an art background, and she feels a strong need for having someone from the Parks Commission on the Public Art Committee, because in many cases, the artists that originally have publicly displayed around the city will be in art spaces. And it commented as well that the Parks Commission is not always necessarily, well, students can be the bodies that would make those decisions, because they're not necessarily artists. Her appointment also, you feel, 3 to 0.
All right, thank you, Counsel Z?
Just a point of order, I don't, I don't think it makes sense to do receive and file, you have the same number on these, so my suggestion is, why don't we just take these out of order, out of committee now, and just do them as one vote? It doesn't make sense to me to take two votes on the same thing, one to approve, and then one to receive and file, I think the record would be confusing, so, I would make a motion to waive the rules to take these four items out of order, out of Community Services, they're already out, amend them to their respective dates, and then approve them collectively. Does that work?
And hence, they'll be pulled out of committee.
Then they're done, we don't have to do them again.
Right. There was a second on that?
Second.
And we still have already waived the rules to waive the second reading, so it's done.
Makes perfect sense to me.
Okay.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Dunio?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Elaine?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Communications?
That leads us to 545, which is the Memo Regarding Zoning Advisory Group and the MBTA.
Motion to refer to Planning and Development Committee of the Whole?
Second.
Counsel Z?
Yeah, I just wanted an opportunity to speak, I will oppose this motion, I think I've stated on the floor here a couple times that I don't think this is the right procedural path for something that is squarely within the focus and the bailiwick of the City Council, which is zoning. I think a City Council-driven process would be more inherently transparent and probably more productive, this is my opinion. I certainly respect that the executive branch can form committees whenever they wish, but I just don't, don't see this as the right path, and so I also wanna say that, as any counselor can, I'm doing my own research and my own looking into things and communicating with the, with the various parties and stakeholders that I can, and, you know, you know, maybe there'll be more than one proposal, I don't really know. I just wanna state publicly for the record that that's my opinion on this, and that's why I'll be opposing the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment on referring this to Planning and Development Committee of the Whole? Hearing none, seeing no hands, roll call on referring this to Planning and Development Committee of the Whole?
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
No.
Counsel Dunio?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Elaine?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Application 188?
Application 188 is the Newburyport Arts and Cultural Shanties Pop-Up Park.
Motion to refer to license and permits.
Second. Counsel Z?
Yeah, I pulled this one out as well, I just wanted to drop a breadcrumb here as well, that, you know, my understanding was that this was always, you know, was temporary, and many things do start off as temporary and become permanent, but we haven't, we have no fee structure, to the best of my knowledge, to utilize this space, and that's come up, and then conflict with other events has come up, and I'm just hoping that the committee can press upon those two questions in particular, because it's, mine just looks like a full-year application, and just weigh those against the need elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? The motion is to refer this to license and permits?
Second.
Correct. Yeah, it's already seconded, I believe.
Okay. Roll call?
Roll call on Application 188, Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Dunio?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Elaine?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes.
A yes.
That was a yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
No transfers, second reading appointments?
We have a second reading appointment, Appointment 462, Murphy has Toomey and Lehane to become city solicitor until 1:31, 2025. twenty-five.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second. I'll, I'll just make one comment. As Chair of General Government, gosh, it seems like a long time ago, I think we did approve this here, and Charis North, our city solicitor, from Murphy Hess, Tumi and Lahane is here. If anyone has any questions for her, I know she's answered some things previously verbally and also in, in writing as well. And I'll just say, relative to the appointment, Charis and I did speak, and if, if they are reappointed, she and I would be speaking on a regular basis, monthly, for, a chance for me to check in with her about city business. And I think what, what I'd like, and certainly open to your opinion, not now, tonight, but just a, a regular procedure, if you have questions that you want to directly ask her, if it's something that's urgent, certainly you could do that. And I'd appreciate a CC if it's something that is less, less urgent, and I can bundle a few emails, I'd CC you, but kind of pull a few things together and, and get those questions to her. Charis did emphasize to me, and this is certainly a reason for me supporting this appointment, she does not, you know, report to the mayor, does not report to city council, she's working for the city of Newburyport, and emphasized that the advice she gives is regardless of who is asking the question, but it would be best based on her legal advice and expertise and also the work that she's done in other communities, so I'd be in favor of this reappointment. Thank you. Counselor Z?
Thank you. I gave this a lot of thought, and I too will be supporting it tonight, but with some reservations, and they're not necessarily about the appointee directly, but more process-driven. You know, I was here for the, the time when we had big, bigger fights about this sort of thing with respect to, frankly, the former city solicitor, relationship with the mayor, relationship with the council as a body, and also relationship with individual counselors. And there were a couple of major things that came out of that. One was, obviously, we changed city solicitors, and that was a big deal in and of itself. That was a many-year, multi-year effort. We also had the actual appointment of the city solicitor become a more formalized part of our ordinance, but for the first many years I was on the council, we didn't approve the city solicitor, and that in and of itself created some accountability that I think was helpful. My reservation in particular is that we all have to recognize that it's hard to put somebody in a position where they are representing two parties that represent the same organization but don't necessarily have the same opinion, and that applies to the mayor, again, say, let's say, to the, the city council, but also within the city council, having eleven people, there are varying degrees, varying opinions, and there always will be. My primary concern going into the next year is I see at least, you know, a couple of development agreements. My confidence is really a little bit broken on those, following the outcome of the mobile station concept where, wherein, you know, the prevailing legal theory is that the mayor can execute development agreements absent the council, but really, those development agreements are in a large, a large part effectuated by the zoning changes that the city council may make. So I'm nervous about those, and the reason I'm standing up and saying this is two reasons. One is, I think we need to revisit that notion that at times, there may be a need for a separate council for the city council. That's not as slight upon this appointee, which again, I'm going to support, just the nature of the business. And two is, we did cut our own, or we did accept a cut of our own legal budget from a paltry five thousand to an even smaller twenty-five hundred in the last budget, and to ask if we could at least get back to five thousand so that if and when these, you know, large-scale agreements that certainly, I hope no one would argue the council isn't a party to in, in a significant way, we would at least have that option. Whether we need it or not, we can. Speaking about the appointee directly, I, I had opportunity to work with the new city solicitor last year during my short-term rental effort, and I appreciated the guidance and responsiveness that I received, and, and that's one of the counterbalancing points. So I will support, but I wanted to express those reservations. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? We do have Attorney North here. Anyone wants to ask him questions? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none online. I think we could move to, so the motion was made by Counselor Z, and who was the second on that? Counselor Hammond? So made and seconded to approve the second reading?
This is, yes. Shall I proceed? Roll call?
Sure, roll call.
Okay, motion approved, appointment one, uh, four sixty-two, second reading. Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Hammond?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Okay, thank you. Next, moving to orders.
We have the order five forty-three, which is a gift acceptance from the Friends of Newburyport Trees in the amount of six thousand five hundred.
Motion to refer five forty-three and five forty-five school security upgrades to budget and finance, and we can tag five forty-five with committee of the whole, just for a little belt and suspenders.
Second. Thank you for the mega-motion, so made and seconded. Any further discussion?
That's budget and finance for both, plus committee of the whole for five forty-five.
Thank you.
Correct, yeah, thank you. Okay, roll call?
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Hammond?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to refer five forty-four Ward one P polling change to general government?
Second.
Counselor Z?
I'm sorry, I got a lot to say tonight, I apologize. I just, I'm hoping that this can get a lot of notoriety, and so I know it's come, it's gone the way in, and it's not customary to talk about it, but this is the polling location change that I've been alluding to. As folks probably know, we had to make a quick change for Whittier, which was a challenge back in January, the special vote. We did flip back to the default of the boathouse from March fifth, which was the presidential primary. Now we have a little bit of breathing room before the fall to have a substantive conversation. I included a memo, really to speak to the residents that I represent, about what is happening with this, and the proposal is to move, permanently move the, the voting place from the boathouse to the mainland where Ward one has voted for a long time, Ward one mainland, of course, their Ward one P. I do want to say that there's no technical outside force that's forcing us to do this, it's more internal considerations and operations, and especially the, the folks who run elections giving us guidance on their feeling about the building. The general government committee will be the vehicle for residents, so if you love this idea, great, if you hate this idea, that's fine too, but we do need that public input because this is endeavor to be a permanent, at least insofar as the word permanent exists, change, meaning we're not going back to the boathouse anytime soon. So I hope folks will take a look at the memo, I tried to explain it as best I could, and any publicity is, is certainly welcome, just to get awareness around the potential change. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wright?
Uh, just to, just to point you out a Scrivener's error in the second whereas. It said, it said the Plum Island Boats has, and eliminate the not, because it has fallen into a state of disrepair?
I think we have a couple of different versions. The one I'm looking at says, "has fallen into a state of disrepair." Do you have a not?
The one in the packet has the word not.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, we can blame the clerk then, not the counselor.
I would love to be blamed.
I like the way you fixed that so quickly.
He's good.
We do, we did catch it, but we want to keep it away from you. So, my apologies.
So refer to committee and blame the clerk. Wait a second.
Okay.
Okay, any further comment, discussion? Okay, thank you, Counselor Z. That would be a roll call then.
This is to move the Methodist five forty-four to general government. Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Hammond?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Which brings us to ordinances.
There is one ordinance, is the aforementioned Specialized Energy Code, ordinance one sixty-six, and...
Motion to send to Community Services.
Yes, for the, for the record, it may have Counselor Khan on your written sheet as a sponsor, she is not here. Counselor Cameron is the co-sponsor so that we can satisfy our rules. I'm sorry, that was to go where?
Community Services.
Thank you.
And Counsel of the Whole?
So, point of order, just since the building, sorry, since this does have to do with the building department, maybe it should go to Planning and Development, all right, P and D, and Committee of the Whole?
I'm open to that.
Okay.
In addition there to, or instead of?
Instead of.
Instead of.
I'll just, just make one comment. So, yeah, Planning and Development does have the building department, which this obviously connects to Community Services, does have the sustainability department, which relates to this, but I think that's fine, what's, what's on the table, what's on the floor right now. So thank you for working that through.
P and D is? Spread the work out.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call on the motion to refer to Planning and Development as a committee of the whole?
Okay. Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
And Counselor Preston?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes.
And Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Hammond?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve transfer one eighty-one. This is a transfer to the mayor's office DEI coordinator, twenty-five thousand dollars, to mayor's office DEI initiative, same amount. So just a really brief history, we, we've had a DEI line in our budget for a few years now. Historically, it has been one line item in the amount of about fifty thousand. If you look back at the FY twenty-four adopted budget, it was broken up into twenty-five and twenty-five. Twenty-five was mayor's DEI initiatives, and the other one was, had a different title, which was DEI coordinator. And if you recall during the budget process, the contemplation at the time was that this would be a nineteen-hour week position, it would be a person, and that's why there was a desire to break it up, to increase the transparency around what the line would be. Now that we're part, part of the way, most, most of the way through FY twenty-four, it seems like in practice, that didn't end up maybe working out the way that was anticipated, and then on the other side, as reported by Andrew Levine, the chief of staff, the city was getting good support and good output, they felt, from a contractor they were using, which was specifically the Y, uh, YW Boston, YWCA Boston. And so, as a result, they sort of started to reconsider whether really hiring somebody was going to make sense, or if, if essentially the work product could be produced by the YW Boston, or a similar contractor along the way. So they decided to explore that, ultimately decided that that did seem to make the most sense. They did get some quotes around it and some estimates, but they are not necessarily a hundred percent certain they're going to go with the YW, but based on that, have, have enough information, I think, to decide that they wanted to go in this direction as opposed to the hire, and then, of course, this follows that, this transfer follows that decision. So they will be getting some other quotes. They never hired the position, so the funds essentially in the budget have not been expended, and so the, the funding is available, and so we went through that a little bit. Then the second piece is, so what, what really will be the work product of the twenty-five K, since this will basically be a, a contract essentially with a contractor for lack of, lack of a better term, and the idea really here is to try and go for a very specific outcome, which is a completion of a DEI action plan, and that action plan, they're hoping they can deliver, you know, sometime before the end of the fiscal year, just give or take. We did have a little bit of discussion on the timeline and how fast maybe it could be done, but it is a pretty finite scope that would be defined and then hopefully completed. And generally speaking, the idea behind the scope is to take the DEI conversations outside of what I think was described as a relatively small group inside the mayor's office, and expand that into a broader thing, incorporate it more into HR and make it more organizational in nature. And then we did have a little bit of a conversation about the Human Rights Commission versus the DEI Alliance. That's available on the tape if you're interested to listen to, and so they are asking for this twenty-five K. And then last thing was, so what happens after that? The answer was generally, they would have this work product, that would be the action plan, and then basically would work within the city to implement it. It's not expected to be an ongoing thing. So exactly what that means for the next budget, not sure, but imagine that there, there might be something reflecting that once this sort of comes to a close. The, but, the Budget and Finance Committee did request a document about this, and we did receive it back, and I forwarded that to the Budget and Finance Committee. I didn't want to clutter your inboxes, but if you're so interested, I'm happy to forward it to the full council or to anybody who's interested in, in it along the way. It was three to zero in committee.
Counselor McCauley?
Thank you, Counsel President. Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. I'm sorry I didn't make the meeting and whatnot, but of the twenty-five thousand dollars that, there's two buckets of twenty-five thousand dollars. So have we spent the first bucket, and that's why we need the second bucket? And if we have, what have, exactly have we spent the first bucket on?
So the first bucket, if you're referring to the line called DEI coordinator, no, that has not been spent, not a penny has been spent, to the best of my understanding. The other one, I, I know they've spent something, the exact number, I mean, Ethan might be here and could tell us, I'm also going to defer to Andrew if, if you want.
The, the exact numbers aren't relevant?
Yeah.
It's a matter of why we need a transfer for the additional twenty-five thousand if we're really just doing a consultant with a preliminary and maybe not even with that consultant. So what have, what exactly have we spent?
The other twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll defer, I mean, I think these, these are in different categories, because the DEI coordinator was under Personnel Services and the other one was under Purchases. So there is a technical need for a transfer, but the practical answer, I would defer to those more knowledgeable with it than myself.
And the answer would be that all those funds are essentially encumbered and then would be overencumbered without the twenty-five thousand dollars that we need for this additional scope that we're planning on doing. So between the quote that we have for the work, and again, we may choose a different vendor based on the three quotes process, and the planned spending on a separate HR scope that we, we are currently working on with the Collins Center, and then with money that we've encumbered for supporting programming, as we have in the past through the DEI Alliance and DEI work through the mayor's office, that would be the full fifty thousand dollars. So that we need the twenty-five thousand that we're requesting in order to do that additional scope.
If I may, as a follow-up.
Counselor?
So, so what, what I'm hearing from that reply is we actually have three scopes going[1662.64] So, what I'm hearing from that reply is we actually have three scopes going on, right? Is that accurate? We have a scope with the Y Boston to do some consulting work. We have a scope with the Collins Group to do some HR work, and we have a third?
The third scope would be the one that we hope to start, which is the final Action Plan delivery.
Okay. So, all three of those will come in under the $50,000 target that we've set aside for this year, and the target is for June of this year to be able to bring those in? Is that an accurate summary of it?
We have $20,000 that was encumbered from last year that we began with, and that money has been used for the initial part of the YW scope. So, between that $20,000, and then we have a $6,000 scope that we're doing with the Collins Center. We have $5,000 that's been earmarked for programming. And then, the remainder of that, and I wish my math was fast enough to do this, the remainder of that would be the amount that will go towards this contract.
And this last contract is, if I may, contract is to take all of this information and put it into actionable items. Is that what?
I think that's a very good summary, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call on the motion to approve the transfer?
181. Counsel McCauley?
I'm a no.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Doniu?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Motion to approve collectively Transfers 182 and 183. 182 is a $42,000 transfer from Water Retained Earnings to Water OPM Services. Transfer 183 is a transfer of $18,000 from Sewer Retained Earnings to Sewer OPM Services, 18 and the same amount. We had Director Amaral and also Roger Jones, the Chair of the Water Sewer Commission, and one of his colleagues join us, which was much appreciated and quite helpful. So, first, let me just explain what's going on. So, to try and telegraph what Director Amaral said, effectively, they got a lot of irons in the fire right now for various projects. There's a lot looming around public water. You heard that in the Mayor's Update. There are actually several sewer things going on, although they seem to be getting less notoriety, the clarifier addition at the sewer plant, and et cetera. And that has manifested through the Council in the last couple of years with a smattering of transfers. You know, we've funded some from here and some from there for different studies in the Water Department. Clearly, at least for the last couple of years, the two big efforts that we've heard about, I think, most would be the Indian Hill Reservoir Connection and the dam, you know. And so, then there's this third little one, or not so little anymore, which is an upgrade to the water treatment plant. So, long story short is, they got a lot of irons in the fire, a lot of consultants, and I guess, to summarize it, Director Amaral was feeling a little bit like some help was needed to help, A, start to, you know, sort of organize this information, B, bring these into a singular kind of thing to consider, I think mostly with an eye towards what risk could be mitigated, at what cost, and to what efficacy. And then, to try and start ordering these things, because I think there's a recognition in the Department and amongst the Water Sewer Commission that it's unlikely that they could fund all of these things. Some may have heard a number in the high 70 millions, you know, as being a number thrown around against some of these projects. I mean, the Indian Hill ones talked about in the 20 to 35 range, et cetera. Then, at the same time, there have been some grants that we have asked for, some many that we didn't receive, such as that 0% interest rate loan that was applied for last year, and some that we have, like the one we heard about tonight. I didn't know about that. So, that's a new one, they ate $100 and something thousand dollars. So, with a little tongue-in-cheek, Director Amaral said this was to fund a consultant to watch the other consultants. And he admitted that and said, but let me explain why. And so, basically, first of all, there is no specific scope to this money, and there's not an exact reason why it's 42 and 18. It's basically, they wanted, they drew up a general consulting scope, meaning a general, just a general, like essentially hourly type idea, and they were going to get, they got bids actually the day that we had met. They had received the bids in, but they hadn't really opened them. So, they would give them an hourly rate, and then he's going to kind of figure out where to take it from there in terms of determining how to use this money most effectively. We had a lot of questions about, okay, well, you know, once you, do you know when you'll exhaust this money? If you do exhaust this money, then what comes next? Et cetera. And I really do think that, to summarize his answers best, you know, they're really trying to get organized. And because they're not organized, they don't exactly have some of the finite answers that we may want or that we may ask for. A couple of other things that I think are noteworthy. One is, and this has probably been asked to you by some of your constituents about the dam event. Did an dam event occur? It's not the right way to say it. Did an event occur at the dam? And the answer is yes. There was some overtopping during that relatively large storm we had about 60 days ago now. What was interesting and surprising, I guess, to them is that it wasn't as big an event as they had thought. They were prepared for it. I know Counsel McCauley, as Chair of Public Works and Safety, provided the Council some information that they switched off some pumps, they monitored. In the end, it was a sort of non-event event in the sense that there were no impacts to water quality or to delivery of water, anything like that. It's not to say at all that the dam is no longer a concern or anything like that, but it does have them reconsidering what the order of magnitude is. And again, this is editorializing, but to hear the Water Sewer Commissioners speak, they seem to be really turning their attention towards the water sewer, water plant, pardon me, water plant upgrade specifically, and the carbon filter that I think many of us have heard about for many years, in large part because of PFAS, which wasn't talked about as much five years ago. So, things are basically moving in all kinds of different directions, and they want to get it together. So, we also talked about, you know, the city engineers' involvement in this, and sort of what are they doing in-house? And we talked a lot about how busy they are. We talked about the tie and bond report that came out. We also had a conversation about, has anybody kind of really modeled what rates would look like if we spent some or all of this money? So, unfortunately, a lot of good questions on all sides, including by the proposing parties, but not a lot of definitive answers. So, I would say, honestly, with some heartburn by a couple of the members of the Committee, we did approve this three to zero. But I think there was a feeling that we'd really want to get some more, something, you know, for budget time, if there was going to be a request for additional funds in the new fiscal year, because this is coming out of retained earnings, but it's going to a budgetary account. So, if it does not get spent, it will fall down back into the retained earnings, not into free cash, but into the retained earnings of each respective fund, which brings me to my last point, which is, we did ask about, could they have used a different source of funds? Maybe I should say, I asked about that. I, they have money, say, for example, that we appropriated for Indian Hill. I personally would have really preferred that they took the money from there and used it for this, because if the whole point is to just take a big pause, then it makes sense to recall some of the money and then redistribute it once there's a real plan. I did ask to consider. I don't gather there's any amendment, so anyways, it was three to zero in committee. All right, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none. We'll have a roll call on the amendment, or excuse me, the motion to approve Transfers 182 and 183.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Doniu?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Motion to approve Order 540 and 541 collectively. So, 540 is a gift acceptance, a grant acceptance, pardon me, for an AED defibrillator for the Fire Department. This is a reimbursable grant, you know, it goes, every town gets it. It's, we got $2,100. 541 was in honor of a late member, and that the funds will go towards giving one or more kids a scholarship towards NRYS summer programs. Both were three to zero in committee.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call?
Roll call on approving 540 and 541. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Counsel Preston, let's keep moving and we'll come back to her.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Sorry, I said yes.
Thank you.
Yes, as well.
Okay, Counsel Doniu?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it for business tonight. Budget will meet on schedule on Thursday. I just want to point out that if you're interested in the school security upgrades, that will be heard on Thursday. The Superintendent will be coming. And I just want to note that the reason it's coming to us is that, if you recall, a couple of years ago, the state started mandating that long leases like this start, be, basically be looked at like a bond, because we're making a long-term commitment. And so, the 731K sort of squarely fits into that category. We also will talk about the elections and the tree gift acceptance. I do not expect to take up the seasonal doc changes that was, just came in as a late file tonight, so I can coordinate invitations, and also do not anticipate taking up Atkinson Common until the ARPA Committee has opportunity to meet. So, I just don't want anybody to come if those are your interests. So, thank you.
Good, thanks for those updates. Community Services, Counsel Preston?
Yes, thank you very much. I looked to the Clerk to first understand if we still need an RNF on Appointments 468, 469, 478, 471.
I think the other one would be?
No, no. They are disposed of.
All right. Okay, excellent. Moving on. A motion to approve collectively Appointments 463, 464, 465, 467, 472, and 473.
Second. Okay, made and seconded. Counsel Preston, go ahead. Counsel, please hold for a second. Counsel McCauley has?
I'm actually going to oppose this, simply because we have three different departments that we're going to, one being Community Preservation Library, and then the Public Arts. You know, whatever the will of the Council is, but I just think we should separate them.
Okay.
I'm just trying to move things forward. I'm happy to break them down.
No, no objection as the second.
So, then, motion to approve Appointment? Sorry, are we ready for that?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Sorry, there's a very significant delay, so it's very cumbersome. All right. So, motion to approve Appointment 463, Adrian Wheatman to the CPA Committee.
Second. Okay, seconded. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, Ms. Wheatman has been in Newburyport with her husband and twin daughters that have had Newburyport schools for about 10 years now. She served on the Newburyport Education Foundation for many, many years as President, but has just recently stepped down from that presidency while she is still serving on the Board, and looking for ways to get more involved in the city. She sees many parallels between the work that the CPA does, as well as the Newburyport Education Foundation allocations for. And she has a particular interest in open spaces. She was approved in Committee 2 to 0 with one access.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call on Appointment 463?
Correct. Counsel McCauley?
No.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Doniu?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Preston, back to you.
Thank you. Motion to approve collectively Appointment 464 and 465.
Counsel Preston?
Yes, thank you. So, firstly, Appointment 464 is Kristen Donahue to the Library Board of Directors. Kristen has been in Newburyport for about 16 years, and then a teacher at Governor's Academy. She spent a lot of time with her children when they were coming out of the library to really foster their love of reading. She has met with the library head, as well as has a friend on the library board, so she has a firm understanding of what the work of the library board is. There was some question in our discussions around the challenges that have the library has been facing with the archive volunteers and staff. And Ms. Donahue made comment that she feels that the way that the library board could really help there is to make sure that all volunteers and staff feel appreciated and valued. Her Appointment was come out of Committee 2 to 1, 2-0 with one access. Carolyn McCarthy is Appointment 465, also to the Library Board of Directors. She's been in Newburyport for 15 years. She is a patron, volunteer, and substitute librarian at Newburyport Public Library. She is a Chinese librarian, and has, that is, her perspective to share. She feels it's very important that, in her role on the Library Board of Directors, it'd be very important to help the Board understand the technicalities of running libraries. And she also commented about the discussion around the challenges with the archives and the archive volunteers and the staff. And she made comment that the Board is very limited in how they can manage a volunteer situation due to the constraints of the charter, the union, and consortium that the library faces. Her Appointment was also approved 2 to 0 with one access.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Approving Appointments 464 and 465. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Doniu?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve Appointment 467, Kim Turner to the Public Arts Committee.
Second.
So, Kim Turner, of course, is also known as, I'm sorry, as Special Project Manager Kim Turner. She was the architect of the Public Arts Committee, really creating both a team to help with the formation of it, but truly being the author of the work that went into the order. She is trained as a landscape architect, and in the past has both cited and installed public art during her career. She feels very, it's very important that we need structure around public art to take it away from the public commission, because they were really struggling as commission to manage the requests. And she feels very, she has a passion to be able to tell the story through public art about who we are and where we are going to have a community here in Newburyport. Her Appointment was approved 2 to 0 in Committee.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Doniu?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and lastly, with the appointments is a motion to collectively approve Appointments 472 and 473, both Cynthia Sharpton and Paula Hasky vouch with the lead songs to the Public Art Committee from the Cultural Council.
Second.
Thank you. So, Ms. Sharpton has lived in Newburyport for 25 years, has worked in architectural office for most of that time. She has a board, has a tinware house, as well as participating in the model, modelly sculpture program. She's been involved in her art her whole life. She's had her master's in museum studies. And we talked a little bit about how her work at Cultural Council will let itself to the PhD. And she mentioned that Cultural Council tends to really focus on performance, literature, digital arts programs, and feels that 3D art is really underrepresented. And she would really like to create a living experience for the history of Newburyport with art. Her Appointment came out of Committee 3 to 0 as well. Paula Hasky is, she has been on the Cultural Council for four years. She is a steward of four plots along the rail trail to art installations, one edible art virtual road. She runs a local nonprofit that would focus on the nexus of art and environment. And as well, she's sat on the team that helped to formulate the Public Arts Committee. Her, she assessed what type of project she has, and her answer was to elevate the visibility of the cultural conversation. Her Appointment also was approved 3 to 0 in Committee.
Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Doniu?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lastly, coming out of today's night is Order 57, which is the gift acceptance of $110,000 from the Moral Charitable Foundation.
Second.
The motion was approved.
Second. Okay, made and seconded. Discussion, Counsel Preston?
So, yes, so, Special Project Manager Turner was present and gave an overview of the Moral Charitable Foundation, as well as their mission and scope. We had a conversation about the fact that the amount that, for this particular project is truly $149,053, as detailed in the attached memo to Order 515. As it details, it's $110,000 in gift acceptance, as well as $37,000 left over from some sort of management work that has been done. thousand dollars left over from some sort of management work that has been done, was done at the Bartlett Mall last year, as well as the process that made two thousand dollars from the Athens and Commons Maintenance Building door that was not, no longer needed for that project. This donation has been sitting in committee for quite some time. It's a delay was really around the fact that we've been waiting for this, the Bartlett Mall project to come in. As many of you should know, the Bartlett Mall project has significantly over the anticipated budget, and it currently does not have a funding source since the funding request for Order 515 has been pulled from the CPC committee. So we had a discussion about the fact that because there is no funding source for the Bartlett Mall, would the Morrels consider donating this money to another project? The Morrels at this time do not want to donate to any other project or more generally to the Bartlett Mall project, but would consider redirecting to some other Bartlett Mall projects if the project were to become more active again. We had, given the stake of the project, the Bartlett Mall, Special Project Manager Turner let us know that the Morrels had been asked twice to give the funds elsewhere, and they said no in no uncertain terms, that they did not be donating money elsewhere. They consider themselves champions of the Bartlett Mall project and they want to see the funds spent there. So there was some discussion. I myself had actually called the Bartlett Mall project aspirational, and there was some discussion about that. Ms. Turner feels really passionate that we really should not be referring to it as aspirational, but prefers to call it on pause at this time. So, Counsel Harmon actually asked some questions around why the Morrels have donated previously to other projects that have not been spent, what the project has to do forward, and the example of the work part at Lower Athens and was given as money that has been donated for a project that is, is not yet spent, and that project works its way through the process. There was also discussion about the utilization of this money, in particular with thirty-seven thousand dollars left over from the slope management at Bartlett Mall from last year to be used to pave, to use, let's be paved, at the west end of the pond so that we can have greater access now to the pond. But it was mentioned from Special Project Manager Turner that that would really not be, by the way, in the left money because when the project does move forward, that let's, let's be paved would be torn out by the construction project. We also had a conversation about granite seating versus granite edging, and in the end came to realize that, well, there has been various terms used, they always keep them the same, always tend to be six inches in height and to be a little less seating. Then, there was also a conversation about the fact that as we had gone through the discussions of the Bartlett Mall project in the past, that the granite seating had been identified as one of the first things that would be valued out of engineering out of the project as it is not integral to the project at all. And as the grid, there was a mention of the fact that the grid and seating, the utility of the granite seating comes in, in the last projections, around six hundred thousand dollars. This came out of committee two to one, I was the vote up.
Okay, discussion? Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I'll just say it upfront, I'm going to vote no on acceptings of the gift, and I'll give my rationale, some of it was stated by the chair. The Bartlett Mall project isn't on pause, it's debt. It's, it's been withdrawn, it has no funding mechanism, we can say anything we'd like about its current status. Yes, there are conservation plans, et cetera, that are along the way, but it will have to be resubmitted along the way. And if we, again, we're, I'm harkening back, unfortunately, to a couple of years ago when we had the Parks Conservancy, and we had a single person who was engaging with the Morrells and stockpiling money for pet projects along the way that weren't necessarily approved by the council, they weren't approved by the Parks Commission. They were projects that started to have savings accounts that were squirreled away. And I think some of the accounting that you just see here is when we accept a gift for a future project that might happen some other time, then all of a sudden, some of these other things start creeping in. Not suggesting anything, but the accounting of it sometimes gets a little bit messy going forward. In terms of the Morrell Foundation, they've been very good supporters along the way, they've done what has been asked of them, and in this particular case, they've been asked to support the Bartlett Mall, which is a project of the person who's been championing this for quite some time. But that money's not going to be any use this year, next year, the year after that. We have other needs, clearly indicated in CPC, I'll list out one, we could clearly take this money and invest it in Woodman Park for a new basketball court. It could be, it would be an investment that the Morrells haven't made in a park down there, and so it would be a great use of funds and using that money today. The Morrell Foundation has one singular obligation, and that's to take their output on an annual basis and donate it to the beautification of Newburyport, and they ask us to direct where the best use of funds may be. And I, for one, would say, I think there's a better use of funds in, that would save us tax money that we would have to be paying otherwise, that we could utilize and leverage their funding to be able to get that accomplished. It will not, if the Bartlett Mall comes back on project, then the Morrells can designate five or six years' worth of output to the Bartlett Mall and not miss a single beat here. So I, I'm asking everyone to say, what would we do with a hundred and ten thousand dollars today versus sitting on a hundred and ten thousand dollars for maybe two or three years going forward? And so with that, I'd like the, I'd suggest that we vote no. We ask again that it is redirected to a more current opportunity in the city today. Thank you.
Counsel Preston, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. So I also have a question, and I want to start by expressing my extreme appreciation for the Morrels and all that they have done for the city for so many years now. And, you know, I don't take lightly the concept of saying no to donated funds. But as Counsel Herman Ward Five just said, you know, my concern here is, you know, stockpiling money for a project that does not have a clear path forward at this point in time, when we do have so many other projects that do have a need. And frankly, a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars could go a long way for some of the other projects that we have. And so, you know, keeping to the vein of the charter of the Morrell Foundation, you know, to beautification of Newburyport, there are many different projects that really could use a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. You know, when I look around at those projects, you know, I look at Lower Athens and I'm very passionate about seeing that move forward. We certainly could utilize a lot of money there, Market Mandy Park for some of the amenities that have yet to be funded there, you know, some of, maybe even Fifty-Nine Low Street, should we be able to move that forward, some of the outdoor spaces there, some of the play areas and courts that we have there. You know, I would really like to see that money utilized in a way that where we have current needs. And certainly, if there was a way for us to bring the Bartlett Mall out of the ashes, I certainly would, you know, welcome the idea of the Morrells donating to the project at that time. But I feel like since there is not a clear path forward for the Bartlett Mall, it just would be a lot better idea to put the money elsewhere. And, you know, in particular, too, you know, again, given the funding mechanism challenges that we've had with the Bartlett Mall, you know, knowing that this money is being specifically earmarked for granite seating is particularly challenging for me, given that that has been one of the pieces that has been identified from the administration as something that would be value engineered out of the program. And so, why would the earmarking money for a piece of a project that isn't even funded, but if it should find a way to be funded, earmarking it for the piece of the project that would be value engineered out just really doesn't make sense to me. You know, and frankly, I didn't want us to say no to Order 151 in particular. I was hopeful that we could receive a pilot so that it would seem less like saying no to donating money to the city. But again, I, I was on the, I was on the losing side of this in committee. So I, too, will be voting no for this, but I do want to be very, very clear that I have a lot of appreciation for the Morrells and the market they have done for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Donahue.
Thank you, President. I'm just going to rise in favor of this, actually, because, first of all, I learned a long time ago to never look a gift horse in the mouth. This is not money that we have the choice to allocate to X, Y, Z other projects. So I don't really understand the rationale, that thinking, while I would love to say, you know, we could put a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars towards X, Y, Z other, other projects that are happening now, that's not an option, that's not, that's not how this works, that's not how the Morrell Foundation works. This is their money. They want to give it to a certain, specific thing that we can either say yes or no to, but we don't get to say, well, we'd rather have you put it towards this. They're not going to do that, that's not how they operate. It's, it's either take this for this, or, you know, or don't. And as far as this project being dead, that's just wrong, it's just flat out wrong. This is not a dead project, this is not an aspirational project, this is a project on hold. Our mayor stated in our, in the mayor's comment earlier that this project should be considered something that's going to be moving forward, that we should be accepting this gift, and I would hope that the rest of the council would understand that this is not the type of thing that we get to decide, we either accept it or we don't. But we don't get to decide what else it could go to, it just doesn't work that way. So please consider keeping the Bartlett Frog Pond in your minds, in the forefront, and that it's not dead, it's on hold. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Zied.
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to say that I think it's really encouraging to have a debate about this because these were the gifts that we never did on the floor, and so there was a lot of missed opportunities, I guess, to have these kinds of debates. And I think, for me anyways, one of the biggest challenges was a lot of feeling that the tail was wagging the dog, meaning that the gift was creating a direction for the city that maybe we weren't necessarily wanting to go. And I think that's some of the tension you're hearing here is, the gift is a bit of a proxy discussion about, do you want to keep investing in this project, or do you think the project kind of really, at this point, doesn't seem to have a bright future, or possibly any future at all, so therefore, what do you do? Typically, these kinds of gifts go to Budget and Finance, so we have a lot of experience with them there, and I'm going to try and help by offering an amendment or a condition on the acceptance, so it doesn't have to be yes or no, maybe there's something here that could appease both sides, and that would be that the gift is accepted, but appropriation is contingent upon the city council receiving and approving a full funding plan and updated project specifications for the Mall project. And I can relay that language to the clerk. But the point behind this is, is that I think what some people are concerned about, and I think rightfully so, is that if we accept the gift, it kind of then goes out into the ether and, you know, doesn't necessarily, we don't really know what the project's going to be. We know that the project that was proposed, there was plenty of detail for that, didn't meet financial muster, that's just a fact. It came back, it was too high, it's a bummer, welcome to the market in 2024. So likely, one of two things will have to happen, you can obviously get more money, that seems to be a challenge, or you can change the project. Bottom line is, that shouldn't be driven by a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar gift, that should be driven by the city's process, procedures, and overall priorities. And I'm offering this amendment as a condition, as sort of a middle-of-the-road thing. So we did do a condition on the Bartlett Mall approval in the first place, you'll recall, and I think that created some substantive process in its time. Granted, I'm sure the administration may have been frustrated with it, but it forced the issue back to the council floor. We had a debate, it went out to bid twice, it didn't work out, and so, but I think that in the end, one would look back and think the process helped. So if there's a second for that, I think that could help, and I think it would give some folks current. And then one last thing is that council can always revoke things, that's just how it works, this, these are accepted by order, that's why it's number Order 515. We can revoke this order in the future, if really we can't get help, maybe redirecting it to something else. We also have the CPA bond authorization, that could be revoked by the council at any time, that's actually hanging out there. So I just want to offer that the council does have a role and does have a mechanism to have these debates, and it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe this is an amelioration that could be lived with by most.
Repeat the motion.
Sure. Sure.
I'll second.
The amendment.
If I can type my password incorrectly. The gift is accepted, but appropriation is contingent upon the city council receiving and approving a full funding plan and updated project specifications for the Bartlett Mall project. So I just want to say, too, that typically when we accept a gift, it's effectively considered an acceptance and an appropriation in one shot. Here, I'm offering a little bit of a nuance to it, that basically, you can accept it so they can get it off their books, but we need to approve it really before it can be spent by the city.
The motion to amend was made and seconded by Counsel Donahue. So now we have on the, on the floor, the motion to amend.
Correct.
Debate about that, discussion. Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of the amendment, simply because this is what we're trying to get to, right? I'd prefer that we actually get to something where we could actually spend the money and, you know, say thank you and reward those that are offering money today. But if, if it's the will of the council to be able to say, we'll accept it as you want, but it may not go there, all we're really doing, I'll say, is we're postponing the inevitable as to what goes on here. And it may move it off our docket tonight, but it's not going to solve the problem, and it's not going to get the hundred and ten thousand dollars to a project this year that actually could be completed out going forward. So, thank you.
And new discussion, Counsel Harmon?
I just want to add, thank you to the Chair of the committee for the thorough summary. We, one thing that I don't think got mentioned or that I would like to reiterate is, we had some public comment and discussion around donor relationship management cultivation, and I do think that while we may be making a change in how we work with the Morrell Foundation tonight, or trying to establish different norms about how funds that they provide to us from their foundation get allocated, we should also be appreciative of the longstanding relationship with this foundation. And a second comment is, the Special Project Manager indicated that while we can, we can certainly pick up an adjective for what this project is right now, but the reality is, if the administration is to have any hope of potentially attracting other funding sources from other charitable organizations, this would be something that having on the books in whatever way I support this amended version would allow the administration to go and seek those funds. Second comment would be, other foundations also pay attention to how foundations are treated in this space. And so if we do hope to get funds for anything completely unrelated in the future, I think it behooves us to shepherd those relationships responsibly so that we appear in good faith with those organizations.
Thank you. Counsel Zied.
Yeah, I just wanted to, as amendment sponsor, acknowledge the Ward Five's point and agree. That doesn't solve the underlying problem. I think the Ward Four Counsel brings up some good points as well, but I think this sends the message we want, which is, thank you, we appreciate it. However, we do have to follow our own sort of prioritization of things, and so this project really, because it's, if it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project in a box, it'd be a very different story, but this is a multimillion dollar project, it has to stand on its own merits, and what we're trying to telegraph back to this donor and any is that the city is appreciative, but please understand there's a huge context behind all of this and that we just ask for your help, you know, essentially, and respecting that. And, you know, if, if there's a desire to communicate with the city at any time, I'm sure we can tell you, any one of us could tell you the projects that we'd like to see funds donated towards. So I'm hoping, again, you'll support it, but I just want to be fair in saying, yeah, it doesn't solve the underlying problem, but it does give us an elegant solution tonight.
Okay, any further discussion? Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I'll be brief on this. I do want to piggyback on the Ward Four Counselor's comments in how we manage donors going forward. I think we've made tremendous strides over the last couple of years in being more transparent in how we deal with donors. the last couple of years in being more transparent in how we deal with donors. This particular entity is coached, right? And that's part of the agreement. They're coached by the special project manager under the mayor's office on to what projects are priorities for the coming year. And so we need to understand that. There are many other organizations that are not coached and, you know, do their best to try to do their due diligence as to where they can make the biggest impact. We see a lot of that with donations to trees. People look at a certain area and say, I'd like to donate a tree there along the way. But over the last couple of years, what's gone on is people were donating for particular areas or for particular designs or designations and things like that. But that doesn't necessarily fit what the city needs to do. We've taken strides. Public arts is a, is a great stride that we've taken. We've taken strides in transparency in dealing with friends organizations and things like that. Those are all positive steps along the way. Some people's noses were out of joint, but the answer is, we're more transparent than when we used to be. And we need to continue to be transparent to support the challenges, as noted by the Ward Four counselor, that we are signaling to folks that we do accept your money. We want to be a partner with you, but you have to work with, within our timeframes and our plans and our budgets, not superimpose just because you have a check. Your priorities on us going forward. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Donahue?
Yeah, I just, I just have to kind of make a few comments, just based on what I heard. It seemed a little back and forth, but I, I, I don't know or believe for a moment that our special projects manager is guiding any donations. I think the Moral Foundation has actually been deeply involved in the Bartlett Mall project for a long time. I think that they do have an affinity for that particular park. So I don't, that doesn't sit well. That leaves a bad taste in my mouth, in fact. It's almost accusatory. And then to end it with saying that the Moral Foundation or any other foundation is driving what their donations or the projects would be is almost kind of counterintuitive to the first part of what Ward Five Counselor said. So I just, I'm not really sure what to make of any of that, but I will be supporting this because, again, we, we don't look a gift horse in the mouth, and this project's not dead. So, thank you.
Not to put the administration on the spot, but we have Andrew Levine here. I don't know if you want to make comment, or Kim Turner's online. Just, so we do, the amendment on the floor would modify the original gift acceptance. Is any, any comment on anything that's been said here in chambers, or you're good? And you?
I'm all set.
Okay. That's, that's fine. Thank you.
I'll just briefly say that our, our finance director, Ethan Manning, is not on the call tonight. He was out today and tomorrow. So we would need to just work with him to make sure there's a mechanism, just financially, that works for this. But obviously, if this is the will of the council, then we're happy to work with it. I think some good things have been said about, you know, sending the right message to the Moral Foundation and making sure that, you know, they hear that we're accepting the gift and also reflecting the realities of the project right now, which is spoken about. Want to add that the Parks Commission is really the driver here of the Moral Foundation. They're the ones who are doing most of the interfacing with them right now. Our special projects manager isn't, isn't really the one who's coaching per se, but there's a lot of groups in the city that care a lot about projects that are happening. And Parks Commission's definitely the, one of the big leaders here, making sure the Moral Foundation hears what's, what's of interest. So appreciate the conversation. Administration's happy to work with the will of the council.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment on the floor? Seeing none. Roll call on the amendment?
Roll call on the amendment. Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
So the motion passes, so the motion on the floor is motion approved as amended.
Okay. Any further discussion? We're all discussed out. Okay, we'll have roll call on this.
On the final motion, prove as amended. Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Seven yes requiring, I believe, six yes. Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Preston, anything further to report out of Community Services?
Exactly. As I will judge, we're mine every word, and we will continue the conversation about 59 Love Street at our meeting next Monday evening back at the City Hall.
Okay. Thank you. General Government, nothing to report. We will have our next meeting before the full council meeting that same evening, March 25th, and we will take up the Ward One Plum Island voting location, as well as the municipal buildings report. Turning to license and permits.
Thank you, Council President. We don't have anything to note tonight. We have some work that will need to be done next, at our next meeting, and be scheduled. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my fellow counselor for standing in for me at the last license and permit meeting and getting all the parklets straight away for us. So thank you, Counselor McCauley.
Good, good timing on your part. Thank you, Counselor McCauley. Planning and Development?
Sure. Motion to approve appointment?
Counsel, Counsel President, you're going to?
Yep.
Okay.
Figure as much. Motion to approve appointment 466.
Second.
So this is appointment 466. This is Larry Jenta. Some of us have had the pleasure of actually working with Mr. Jenta on the council. I had the honor of working with him for two years on PND. He served on the council for six years as the Ward Five City Counselor. Admirable job. He represented the ward well. He wants to come back and help support the city. I think the mayor was looking for volunteers, and he willfully said he would be up for it. And with his experience in building and construction and the HVAC industry, he seemed to be a good fit for the zoning board of appeals as an associate member. So with that being said, the council voted, the committee voted three to zero to approve his appointment.
Great. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call?
Roll call, noting Counselor McCauley has recused himself. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Motion to approve appointment 474, Dennis Morell to our building inspector.
Second.
So this is a confirmatory appointment. We didn't have Mr. Morell come back in. We know that he has a fan club with the Disabilities Commission, and he has been an asset to our community for these last few years as the building inspector. So we voted three to zero to continue his, continue his appointment as our building inspector. Three to zero in committee.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call?
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, sorry.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I will do a collective one. Motion to approve collectively appointment 475, Kevin Wallace to the Fruit Street Historic District Commission, and appointment 478, Edward Normer to the Historic Commission.
Second.
So Mr. Wallace, who was not at our meeting, but we did communicate a few times via email, he is the lone original member of the Fruit Street Local Historic District Commission, and that was started in 2008. Since he wanted to continue on, we thought that was a great idea. Tribal knowledge is a beautiful thing. The committee voted three to zero to approve his appointment. And then appointment 478, Edward Normer to the Historic Commission. Mr. Normer was actually an associate member. He is moving up onto the Historic Commission, so he's already got the experience there. He is looking forward to it, but he also said that he would never be able to replace Joe Morgan, who was not reappointed, so making that comment. The committee voted three to zero to approve both of these appointments.
Okay. Any discussion on these, this reappointment and appointment? Okay. So collectively, hearing no discussion. Have a roll call?
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis? Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along. Motion to approve appointment, reappointment 476, Robert Courier to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
So you just can't say enough about Mr. Courier. He worked for the Stratford Housing Corporation. He was making affordable housing in Lowell's Mill Buildings. He is a huge asset to the Affordable Housing Trust. His passion is obviously, is there. He spoke of how we needed to make sure there was a funding mechanism for our Affordable Housing Trust to keep Manuver Port moving in the direction of making sure that we do have affordable housing in this community. It was just remarkable, his passion, it was exuding from him. So we just, he was actually here tonight. I hate we didn't get to his appointment before he left, but the committee voted to approve his reappointment three to zero.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call?
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, motion to approve reappointment 477, Andy Port to, as Director of Planning and Development.
Second.
All right. So the committee spoke with Director Port for quite a while last week, asking about his time here. I believe 13 years as our planning director. We asked about his plans for the near future, specifically MBTA communities. This year is definitely going to be a big year for zoning for the community. We do have, he has a lot of folks working on this. We have consultants. We have the grant that came through from the state to work on the story ad and the 40R district specifically. Council Wright actually brought up some of the concerns he had over the lack of changes we've had in our zoning over the years. I mean, I can say that when I first started, we had a consultant in that we didn't get far with her, but it's a foundation that we can possibly use to keep moving forward. One of the items we did speak on was the possibility of having another person added to the planning office. Hopefully this time, if that does get put into our budget, that we can start looking at the opportunities of having someone be specific for zoning, because I think it's pretty evident that that's going to be a big portion of what's going on this year. The committee voted three to zero to approve his appointment. We actually did have Glenn Richards, who is Chair of the Historic Commission, speak on behalf of Director Port, and we all agree that Director Port seems to have a lot of, a lot of fans. We know that he does a lot of good work and lots of room for, we all can have room for improvement, but we know that this year is going to be a big one for zoning, and we approve Director Port three to zero coming back in.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Zied?
Thank you. So I have a tremendous amount of respect for the, for the appointee. And last time this appointment was up, I did not support. And unfortunately, I don't find myself in a position to support tonight, but it's really not for lack of effort or anything like that. It's more about policy direction, and that's been an ongoing question and concern. And I think I'm actually rising, if you will, with less opposition than last time. I've had a lot of nice conversations with Director Port, and I'm really trying to understand. And my, my areas of real policy difference, I think, if, to the extent that there are some, would be on things like parking, density, things along those lines. And there are some positions in the city that are extraordinarily important to the direction of the, of the city in that respect. And so I do have an obligation to kind of weigh that into the consideration, even if I like the person, feel that they're working very hard and all those sorts of things. That's one of the challenges of being a city counselor. So I will absolutely be happy to continue and delighted to work with the individual, but, but as far from a policy standpoint and from that standpoint alone, don't find myself in a position to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Seeing none online. Roll call?
Roll call on approving appointment 477. Counsel McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion needing sick, receiving more. Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you.
So that is it. Out of planning and development, I do want to thank Counsel Preston for running the meeting last week. I was remote at the time. She did an outstanding job. She was actually supposed to do this tonight until she said she was snowed in Vermont. So thank you, Counsel Preston. We will be meeting next week, probably take a look at what we heard tonight from the Energy Advisory Committee, so I will make folks aware of what gets on the agenda for next Tuesday at 6:00. And that's a committee of the whole item as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Safety, Counsel McCauley?
Nothing tonight, Counsel President. Thank you.
Okay. Good of the order. Just a couple of things I'd like to mention. Like to thank the Clerk's Office and the poll workers for a very successful presidential primary on March 5th. I think that went virtually without, without any hitch that I was aware of. And so thank you for all of that work. I know that was a lot in terms of early voting leading up to that. Not a lot of attention, but on actual poll day, you all came through. Related to that, the Clerk informed me that there will be a recount, which I know is familiar to at least several of us. And this will be of concern for you if you're a Republican voter, perhaps for Republican State Committee member for the First Essex and Middlesex Senate District. That would be, you know, we're in State Senator Tar's district, so that's, I believe, 22-ish or 19 communities. And that, that will be happening. There was a contested state committee elections across the Commonwealth in the Republican Party, and I believe somebody who may be 24 votes short, whatever the total was, is filing for a recount. So the Clerk will be in action again very soon, I believe, possibly Friday. I don't think that's hit the media yet, but we're just...
If I might, Mr. President?
Please.
Hasn't been set yet. It looks like it will be next week.
Okay. No rest for the weary, as they say.
The, I can't say enough about the office. I mean, we had 17-hour day on Tuesday, and then we were recently informed there was a recount. You can put me on suicide watch, but I'm okay.
We'll make it together.
I'll go to the light, Richard.
Counselor Zied?
Thank you. I just, good of the order being primarily for procedural stuff. I just want to express kind of a thought question to ponder around committees when they're formed by the executive branch versus those that are ad hocks that are, say, formed by the city council or standing committees. My sense is it's becoming a bit confusing, I think, for some residents. There's a couple of notable examples, like TSAC, which has been around for a while, Transportation Safety Advisory Committee, but that's not a city council committee. And then we have the newly formed ZAG or ZAC, whatever this one's called. And then there was one of those in the past. There are some other committees as well. I mentioned in Budget and Finance, the HRC versus the DEI Alliance, which is not, you know, so in other words, the line legally, right, is what appears in our ordinance or what is formed by city council order. And I think residents are getting a little bit confused, is my sense, as to what it, what exactly it means. And so the mayor is free to form any committee anytime to get advice on anything. Waterfront West Committee, invite counselors onto it and so forth. The council, though, also has its own role in those things. And I'm just saying, from a transparency process, residents are not, they don't get that. It's very hard to discern. And sometimes for us, we don't discern it either. And so when we ingest, say, advice or feedback from one of these groups, we need to be clear about why it's... open? Is the meeting going to be recorded? Does it meet open meeting law standards and so forth? So I'm just suggesting to everybody, just, we need to think about that. And, you know, there may be some cleanup work that should be done, or at least some consideration about what's what and why it's what. So, I'll yield to that.
That could be a topic for general government in some way, shape, or form. So, thank you, Counselor. Any further good of the order? If not?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Roll call on the motion to adjourn. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming. All right.
[inaudible][1428.75]